You're here for public comment?
Okay, it says we're, we're live. Go ahead. I don't, I'll put you guys back on Zoom.
I'll go ahead and call this Legislative Session of the House on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Clontz and the Invitation by Councilman Goodman.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish to pray with me, please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we reach out to you as a government body, leaders in our community, in these turbulent times in our country. We ask that you keep your mind and eye closely, watch our prayers with the Floyd family, that you help the communities, and that you encourage all to speak their mind, but in peace, in your way. We ask for this meeting that you give us your guiding hand, so that we can do the best for our community, so we can guide, we can lead, and make the best decisions. And all these things, in your name, we pray. Amen.
All right, Mr. Clark, you'll call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. East?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Clontz?
Here.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Here.
Mayor Clontz?
Here.
Mayor Clontz, sorry.
All right, I need a motion to modify the agenda to add item 12G under Old Business, water filter plant, filter number four repair update. A motion of second, if you follow the roll, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Well, thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to have y'all here. I don't have anything under presentations, so that will bring us to public hearings.
Okay, can, can everybody hear me okay if I just talk from here? So, you'll remember from the last meeting, the May meeting, we have a chunk, a chunk of property that's at the corner of West Main Street, Magnox Drive, whatever, depending on which map you're looking at, and Altoona. And it is, has no value to us. It's in the flood zone, it's along the creek, but it is adjacent to the T.G. Howard Community Center property. And tying that back, they're looking at doing a grant through the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. And that, the amount of the grant is based on the amount of basically square footage or acreage landmass that they have. So if we were to donate this land to the T.G. Howard, they could get some value out of it. Still can't use it, but they can at least get some, a higher amount of grant potentially. So, we scheduled, council scheduled a public hearing for property disposition for this piece of property. You have in your packet, two maps, one showing the tax map, one showing an aerial view of the property. If you've driven through there, the land, as soon as the road drops off, probably six to eight feet immediately. So it's down near the creek, creek level anyway. So it doesn't lay very well, but it does have some potential value to the, to the T.G. Howard Community Center. You'll show, you'll see on the, on the aerial, that it does, the two lots that we call the T.G. Howard Community Center property is actually in the Pulaski Christian League, Christian Citizens League, and Mary Wyatt Buford's Women's Club ownership. But that's being worked through to get into the T.G. Howard.
It's already done.
Already done. Thank you. It's good to have an attorney behind me. So what we, I guess what we need to do is recommend after public hearing, probably best to follow our budget public hearing guidelines that we've set up for public comments. Not take action tonight, but invite comments electronically, post it electronically, ask the media to put it out, and take action at the July 7th council meeting would be the recommendation. What we do need to at least officially open the public hearings tonight, since we, even since we have public in presence.
With that, what I'll do is I will open the public hearing for the proposed disposition of the property at Altoona, West Main. I'll check to see if anyone in the room has any comment on it. And not doing, not having, so do I need to wait and close it now and then come back to it on the, on the 7th? So we will now close the public hearing.
Now, we'll go ahead and make sure we have it on Facebook and have it advertised to get official comments.
We now come to our public comment period. I didn't get any slips. We spoke, I asked, so I don't think I have anything going on there. From there, we'll go to the consent agenda. We start with the minutes from March 31st, 2020 council meeting. Had a chance to look at those, so accept the motion to approve them.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the March 31st, 2020 council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion to second. Please signify by saying aye if you approve them.
Aye.
Repose. All right, from there, we will move to the minutes from the May 6th, 2020 council meeting. Have approved those as well, if you, someone would offer a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve the May 6th, 2020 council meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion of second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving from there to our project update.
Yeah, I guess I'll start to see if anybody has any specific comments or questions about any, anything on the project summary chart.
I do.
Okay. Okay, so I'll baffle through this and, and Ms. Herrick can, can correct me if I go wrong. But it's basically, it's gonna be the Pocket Park downtown where the old Renaissance building was. With, with lights, it'll be a lit park. Fifteen facades, some landscaping along the creek, it's already, a lot of it's been done. What am I missing?
Lights in the alleys that come into the, into the Peak Creek walkway there, that will also be lit with alley lights.
That's the biggest part.
What about the, the trees and sidewalks and cross up?
Those are part of the VDOT project. The Commonwealth Transportation Board has it, and it's being recommended to be funded. They don't meet, I should have looked that up. They don't meet till later in June.
I was only in person, this is all to build.
The sidewalks were funded by the V, by VDOT. The sidewalk cost was three quarters of a million or six, six or seven hundred thousand dollars, what, do you remember? It was, it was a lot more than what we had the money for. That's why we went to the VDOT.
And sometime ago, I asked for some drawings, and you sent them, but I can't see, like, I can't read them.
Okay. We'll print, we can print the full. Would this size be good? We can print that for you. Sure. Remind me before we leave tonight, I can do that for you.
Then the cost, how much would the loan of grant originally?
Just under seven hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, I believe.
Do you know how much we've spent already?
I would guesstimate a hundred thousand on, for the engineering side and, and the Pocket Park construction and stuff. I don't know exactly, but I would guesstimate somewhere in that range. I can find out exactly.
Going off so long, you see very little.
Right. What the good news is, we've got four or five agreements ready or almost ready. So we'll, I mean, within the matter of week to 10 days, we'll have construction ready to rock. So, and then another couple in the books or in the works, and I think we've gotten 15 identified. We've gotten the 15 facades identified.
The two-
It's just a matter of working them through.
The buildings that West Main Development has completed, 85, 87, 89, and 924 across the street, those are also included. They're being reimbursed for the materials.
You said identified, would they be?
We have people that say, hey, I'll, I want to participate. Now, they may not have signed the agreements yet because we don't have all the costs. But we have, a lot of times with the downtown projects, it's hard to get the owners to, to come in and play, basically, to participate. I think that's really what happened with the last, the town's last downtown project. We had difficulties getting in. Of course, I wasn't here, but what I understand was they had difficulties getting owners in, they just brought in everybody, everybody they could. The good news is, I think we have 15 facades identified as ready, and, and, you know, we know these are our targets. We're not looking for anybody else. So it's just a matter of, of working through the cost estimates and, and that process.
I'm looking at the Pocket, the Pocket Park. It's been, caused to take there for six months. And the dates, and the bill. And you, you told me the date is 15.
Of June to get the Pocket Park.
Pocket Park.
Part. Now, the, the, the holdup right there has been the brick pavers or the, the pavers themselves.
Weather and the pavers are on, on order. The suppliers just aren't producing right now, so.
And I'll be honest, I bet June 15th, that's optimistic.
The contractors provided that date.
That's not gonna happen, I don't believe.
So, so how much of the project did bid it up?
The first, first phase of buildings is done, so the five buildings has been bid out. Of course, the Pocket Park portion, I would say we've probably accounted for four hundred thousand of the seven hundred thousand in the initial rounds thus far. I mean, there, we've contracts ready for that much or signed for four hundred of the seven hundred.
What was the extension date on the form?
The original was October. They haven't told us when they're, they're doing automatic extensions for everybody. They just haven't told us what those extensions are yet. I figure probably into the calendar year, but I'm still trying to push all we can this summer. We need to, going off Mr., Mr. Penn, what he's saying, we need to see action. The community needs to see action this summer.
Yeah, I want to just follow up on the VDOT. You mentioned it, you said someone's going to recommend.
So the stat- Yes, the, the applications went through the, the smart scale process. It's a new VDOT grant process. And we had, a little birdie has told us that the, the downtown portion from Jefferson to Washington has been recommended for funding. Now, we don't know if that's recommended for funding in one year or spread out over three years or what happened, but they didn't tell us any of that. But as soon as the Commonwealth Transportation Board meeting agenda comes out online, we'll, we'll have a better idea. That, I think, like I said, I think that meeting is later on in June. That doesn't mean we'll be doing sidewalks this fall, because there's going to be, you know, there's, they're ready to take this as federal money. Best case scenario, we're busting up sidewalks in spring of, of next year, honestly. You don't, I don't know, you don't want to pour concrete in the wintertime. I think we'd be ready to do it November, December. But if, you know, if it's cold, you don't want to pour concrete in. And, you know, one, another thing, the reason why we chose to go, and, and we're looking to bid it out rather than our town crews doing it. We'd rather have a contractor who has enough equipment for the, there's a lot of glass down through that side, those sidewalks, and, you know, any chip could break a pane. So there's, I guess there's curtains, there's things that go up that we don't have. So we're going to look at a contractor to take those liabilities.
All right, thank you. Wendy, you should know something. We should know something regarding VDOT in July, so.
Thank you.
He says that's between Jefferson and Washington, so just the West Main section. Is there any plan to do anything on East Main Street?
That's the next, the next step for the downtown redevelopment. Yes, we get this done, the next step was to go down a block and do the same thing. And that'll be a little more intense, because I don't think the streetlights, the little historic streetlights go down far enough down to Madison, anywhere near Madison. Do that and, you know, try and catch the landscaping in, in that block. Next one, we go west toward Randolph.
Let's say we, the grant, we have a kind of a deadline of, of losing.
Well, that, that's what Mr. East was referring to. So originally, it was in October. And the, the state has, has told us that they'll be giving extensions to all grantees. We just don't know if it's going to be a six-month extension or 90-day extension or what yet. Any other questions? Somebody sure?
I got just two questions. One, thanks for not on the chart, it's been a couple of months since we've gotten any updates on.
The, sorry. We have, one of the hearings had gotten continued because the courts wouldn't allow, well, not the courts wouldn't allow. There was a continuance request because of travel, because the defendant is from New York. And so right now, we're trying to fix the, set the next date on that. So what we have are two pending dates, one for matters from this year, and a circuit court matter for the initial claim. And the circuit court matter, we're trying to still set, and the matter that was set for this year is set for
The 24th?
That sounds right, but, yeah, the afternoon of Wednesday, the 24th of June.
And what's involved in trying to set the circuit court date?
The time and agreeing with the other attorneys as to the times that can be, what, when court's available and when the attorneys are there.
That's the communication.
Right, and we're, we communicated with them on Monday what potential court dates could be, and so we're waiting for their response. So we, on Friday, we had communicated Friday, we're waiting to hear back, but they'll respond within the next couple of days to try to select that date.
And the update on the actual chart for the boundary adjustment says it was moved to the March meeting was the most, was the next step. It worked well past that at this point, so.
Yeah, they, they did end up having that. It may have actually been the April meeting, when that actually was presented. We have met as a two-by-two once, and staff-wise, a couple additional times had several conversations with, with Mr. Good, uh, Good, Mr. Sweet at the county. I think we're going down the right path. It's just going to be a lot longer, it looks like, but hearing from the attorney and with Truman Sanders, it's a much longer path than what a couple of handshakes and votes will, will do. So chances are, we'll get an agreement, a draft agreement in front of the board supervisors and town council, July. Likely would be a July work session discussion item, and then work through the court system and the, the state system for. It's not going to happen, the, the boundary adjustment itself will happen likely until tax year 21, which is in December timeframe, October time, October. The goal on the agenda, on the timeline with the contract with the attorney was October next year. So it'd be affected with December tax payments.
How long will it be before it opens up for the comment?
As soon as we can get that agreement, those agreements in front, that's what requires after they, if I remember correctly, on the process, we have the agreements, and then we have to have a 30-day public comment process opening. And then council and the board will take action, and it goes to the state corporate.
Commission of local government.
Thank you for commission of local government, and then it'll go to a three-judge panel, and there'll be public comments through each, each level. They'll actually have hearings here. We may host it here, we may host it at the train station, depending on how many people we end up expecting.
So you expect us to see more next month?
Yeah, if I keep the conversation going. Yes, sir.
I'm hearing concerns from some of the larger property holders over there. Have you made any effort to reach out to the landowners other than Mr. Hagan, who's supported it so far?
Initially, I haven't. In the last, I would say, the last conversation I have, I've had with some of them may have been three months. I've had some conversations with others just in the last couple of days. What I'm hoping is to get some type of an agreement on where the boundaries would be, because I think that's still way up in the air, as far as where the county's comfortable, where we can serve, and what makes best sense for the town. Also, as soon as we get those boundaries out and down, I think we need, the good news is, it's just a bunch of farmland. And it's not, there are not thousands of citizens to talk to. There's dozens. So we can have one-on-one conversations with them. That's the good news, where else to come from. So hopefully, you know, I don't know that that conversation will happen. Probably should happen before the, the July work session. So that would give us a little more momentum to, to get this agreement, boundary ironed out.
I think we need to make every effort to include each of these property owners and keep them actively engaged. So silence would be our worst enemy.
Sure. That's actually the biggest complaint I'm hearing, is they've, they've gotten pieces of it. But they kind of feel like the, the town is just gonna force the issue and don't want to talk to them.
And that's, that's our thinking case, but I would definitely reach out, thank you.
Anything else? All right, from there, we will move on to item 12A under Old Business Resolution 2020-12, Resolution ending fiscal year 2020 budgets.
As we get into these next four action items, I'll, I'll refer you to something that, an item that was left on your dais up at the top, it says survey response, re-budget, FY 21. As you remember, we did, we did do a, a, a basically a survey monkey on the, on the town's website to try and get public comments on the FY, the current year question amendments, the water rate proposed increase, the garbage rate proposed increase, and the FY 21 budget proposal. Out of all four of those items, we got one comment for everything. So this, you have a copy of it there on your dais. But I think the, what you have in front of you, the 2020-12 resolution finishes that current year budget. And honestly, looking at the, at the revenue numbers, we've done a lot yesterday and today with this recent, and myself, the revenues are looking steady, if not better, than, actually better than what we have in the proposed budget. So I feel a lot better about what, what the amended budget coming in is coming. Glad to answer your question.
Any other questions? Accept a motion to approve Resolution 2020-12.
This month, I was trying to like most of weeks, set for Resolution 20, 20-12.
Second.
A motion of second, if you will call the roll, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
No.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
All right, we will move to item 12D, Ordinance 2020-02, ordering setting charges for water service.
As you remember, the, one of the requirements in the Brookmont HAA5 project through the Health Department requires a three-year commitment for 3% increases. This is year two of the three. And it also coincides with the Davenport study, but we're, this is really required by the Health Department grants. So as proposed, you have it in your, in your packet. Reminder, we had a public hearing, public comment session, and no comments specific to the increase except for the one.
Care to make a motion on Ordinance 2020-02?
I'm moving to approve Ordinance 2020-02, I have written. Second.
A motion of second, if you'll call the roll, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
That will move us to item 12C, Ordinance 2020-03.
This is the, the ordinance for the monthly rate for refuse, residential refuse. The county PSA actually does all the work, and we bill it and pay the PSA, keep a 5% retention for our work. The PSA, as you know, advertised for a public hearing for a dollar increase a month, per month. They held that public hearing last month. Their public hearing for their overall budget is next week, so they haven't taken action. But they, according to the executive director, expects that to move forward. I would recommend moving forward with this ordinance. And if something out of the ordinary happens, we can certainly take action at the July meeting to reverse the, the, the cost, so that it doesn't affect billings. But I would recommend 2020-03 as written.
This is a pass through.
This is a pass through. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance 2020-03 as written.
Second.
A motion of second, if you'll call the roll, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
That will move us to item 12D, Resolution 2020-16.
This is the, the proposed resolution for upcoming FY 21 budget, and sets the, the proposed budget. And I will say, I think it's a dead horse that will keep beating until we have a better idea. This is, in my opinion, the bookmarked budget that we'll be revisiting in all honesty. We'll have, we should have better numbers in August. Sales tax numbers, they, they go about 45 days to 60 days behind. Meal stacks are usually 30 days, but we're, we're, we're pretty comfortable with where we are in health meal stacks. But we'll have a better idea certainly by, by August, if not before. So I think we'll be talking about this quite often. But this does get us a budget for this upcoming year to where we can at least move forward with some level of comfort. Same process for public hearing and public comments was done with this as the other three. So we'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Did you have any questions?
This, just the one, the one comment was for, it kind of covered almost all, all four of the areas.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add that, as this is my last comment on this budget, I'm concerned that the budget fails to recognize the serious issues moving forward, and that is repaying your reserves. It shows zero intent for it. And I would hope that the council coming forward will make every attempt to solve that problem, as well as to continue to move forward on the university services complex without increasing the tax amount. It's gonna have to be paid for that $400,000 a year. Because it doesn't really recognize the need to, to cut more and repay the reserve funds, as is gonna be discussed in shortly. I cannot support it.
Any other comments on that? I have a motion regarding Resolution 2020-16.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion. We accept. Uh, make the motion. We accept twenty twenty dash sixteen resolution, as written.
Second.
A motion in a second. If you recall, roll Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Goodman?
No.
Mr. Clanks?
Hi.
Mr. Rancle?
Hi.
Uh, we will now move to item twelve E, an update on the emergency declaration from March thirty first, twenty twenty. That was in ordinance twenty twenty dash O one.
You'll see in your, uh, in your package summary. This ordinance did actually run out this, over the weekend. We're not recommending any amended or, um, emergency declaration. I don't know that we could since the county has extended their own declaration, but it seems to be. We're, we're moving forward in a pretty positive manner as a region and, and I'm proud to, to be part of. The, the regional group, the New River Valley managers that have really taken the lead on, on, uh, whether it's the increased testing, the, the funding for, uh, emergency task force. Whatever happens with the CARES Act funds, I think we're personally, I believe the town of Pulaski is. In a good place compared to, to other localities. It could be a, a lot worse, but. I don't know that we need to have any action other than to notify council and the public that that declaration has, has expired. Unless anybody has any questions.
Hearing done, we will move to item twelve F, the monitor drive extension.
Following the, uh, the May fifth meeting, we did, uh, council did take action to direct the staff to. Create the documents necessary for, uh, to consider that right of way, uh, extension into the, bringing it into the town system. What we're doing, what we're in the process now, Mr. Reyes is, has the, uh, is working on the documents and Mr. Pedego is working on getting the, the survey plaque. Pulled together for the necessary easement. We have a, an easement plaque from the seventies maybe or eighties. It's, it's an older plaque. So to get that updated survey. So I just wanted to make sure that wasn't falling off of the, uh, the radar. This is a very important project for the county because this is tied to the New River Trail Extension. It's one of the, uh, the negotiating items for, for the, the trail, the owner that's donated property for the trail extension. So I just wanted to keep it in the, in the, uh, front of force. Most likely, I expect you'll have some action required or requested this July, um, council meeting. Information on.
Where is it true?
It follows the property line just north of the railroad, basically. If you go from. Uh, starting from Ex Lloyd. To the east and. South of the, of the railroad right of way.
Where is in progress?
I'm sorry, it's under construction.
It is. Most of it is built.
It's, it's probably seventy percent complete. With all the rain, it's been a mess.
All right, well, we will move on to new business, uh, item thirteen A, stormwater is out of mitigation.
Twelve, the twelve G.
Oh, the twelve G A, yes, the thing we did the modification for. There you go, it's turn.
Hey, members of council, we, uh. Filter number four reconstruction project's going on well. We've got the old filter bed out, everything is reconstructed and ready to accept a new bed. But in the process of doing this, the wall between filter number three and filter number four has got some structural issues. Uh, there's a lot of, um, spalling, rust, degradation of the rebar that will have to be fixed. And our engineers are suggesting that we coat that wall between filter three and four. Can try to help keep that water off the rebar. It's rather expensive. We'll need to do a change order to the tune of about fifty four thousand eight hundred forty nine. That's option number two. In your packet, I guess you've got the minimum for the contractor. There were three different options. This is the cheapest, but. It's using the teneumic coating, which is what they recommend to use. We have to do the structural repairs period. It would be foolish not to try to coat this wall to keep that from happening again. If we don't do it now while the filter bed is out and the media is out, we'll have to pull that whole bed down again.
Are there, I'm assuming there are other walls within?
Two more.
Two more.
There, there is, Greg. I don't expect those to be as bad. I think a lot of this damage was caused as part of that heating up of that precast concrete bed. I think that had.
Do we have?
I think they're connected.
Do we have, do we have a way of inspecting that without, or do we have to take them offline?
We have to take them offline and pull it down.
Is that something that we need to plan to do and then?
Absolutely planning. Okay.
As soon as I can get the filter pulled back and operate.
Understood. Instead of the.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the recommendation from the engineers is that the teneumic is the, the better option over the Sherwin-Williams and what Warren environmental is proposing?
Yes, um, option two. Teneumic. Um, actually the Warren environmental was one that the contractors submitted. But we were not able to get in contact with any of the references. They're just not familiar with that part.
On the funding side. So, uh, we closed on the bond, of course. That was a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar bond. Out of that, just under forty thousand, I'm going to use ballpark number, ground number, forty thousand was engineering related permitting related. And two hundred and fifty thousand is construction related. So that entire bond minus a little bit of those contingency. This has been accounted for or spent basically in the current contracts. So. The current fiscal year in the water fund, we have forty six thousand dollars that's budgeted basically as a contingency set aside. That we could, we could pull from a portion of. Next fiscal year, we have sixty three thousand that's in that contingency. So we can pull from the. Either one or, or split between both or what have you, however, the billings end up coming out. From the, from that waterfront contingency. Without having to get specifically into reserves or any, or, or other line items to take away from the water plant. Operations and, and their costs. So what I would recommend would be to. And we can do this by, um, by motion since it's less than one percent of the budget, but recommend. Splitting the, the cost between this fiscal year and next fiscal year and using those, those contingency funds. However, it's necessary through the, uh, through the billing, however, whenever the bill is confirmed.
Are there any other line items that are already spending that contingency fund?
Now, we haven't spent the water fund, sewer fund contingency funds. Probably since, uh, when it's, it's been a couple of fiscal years. Most contingency funds come out of general operations. So we, we've been fortunate.
So, so, so the, uh, in, in your original. Bits. There were, uh, money for permits. What went about for this?
Um, through the health department, the state permits. And most of that, I guess, is probably engineering costs.
It is, yes.
Not necessarily a, a check that goes to the state, but engineering costs to get the, the, uh, the drawings and, and everything in place for, for, for the permits. And they were able to push it through pretty quickly.
Question. So option number two, uh, is saying, if I'm reading the same right, the concerns regarding the tile wall. Still remains and therefore this wall will not receive coverage under the warranty. You saying option two is better than option three if option three is saying they're fully warranted? Is?
Yes, uh, so option, option two is recommendation for engineering.
So you recommend an option two?
Yes.
Even though it doesn't have warranty like option three, why, why is that?
They're not familiar with the option three product.
Okay.
They never use it. Um, they can't get ahold of anybody to give it a reference, you're bad. So they don't get a comfortable one, one. The teneumic product is a Roman box. We use a lot of coatings ourselves.
And I, I will say that, uh, if you, if you look at the way the water plant was rehabbed seven, eight years ago. It was with a new product and a, a up and coming similar to, and not, I wouldn't say that's bad quality, but. Right now we're having some issues with that upcoming product. So I think the comfort level. Stay, sticking with the teneumic is, is why we're, we're recommending option two.
We have a positive history with it.
Yes.
Um, would it be fair to say that, you know, even though Warren environmental is saying they can warranty it? Really, the only way you could truly warranty a product is if you took the wall down and rebuilt it from scratch, right? Cause once, once the, once the, the cement is damaged, there's always a risk we're going forward.
There is, but you know coatings have come a long way. Uh, they can coat concrete, rebar to it. It's, it's done all the time.
And there are some that even get structural value, added structural value to.
Some do, yes. But what you want to do, do is protect the rebar steel. That's where you get your strength. Um, and I forgot to add earlier too, um. The filter bed, the mechanics of the filter bed is actually going to be shipped June twenty second. It will arrive here in Pulaski on the twenty ninth. And some piping and other associated things is gonna, are gonna arrive here June fifth. So they're moving along. Um, that's kind of the critical thing with this coating is when you get it on. Give it time to cure. So they get the bed and if you keep moving, it can filter floor back in service.
What do you think EPA would be on the completion? Guessing that.
End of July.
That's good.
All goes well.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that, um, we support, uh, the option two, the teneumic system. In the amount of fifty four thousand eight hundred forty nine. The appropriation for which will be allocated between the remaining. Contingency reserve, uh, contingent line item of this year's water fund. The balance of the amount to be charged to the contingency line item of the water fund for fiscal year twenty one.
Second.
A motion in a second. If you recall, roll Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Goodman?
Hi.
Mr. Clanks?
Hi.
Mr. Rancle?
Hi.
All right, this time for real, we're going to go to thirteen A, the storm water and flood mitigation discussion.
Well, um. With all the rain that we've had even since the last meeting, this is, this is a, a well timed conversation. And let me tell you. The direction that council gave me was difficult because there aren't very many low hanging fruit that we can capture right now, especially as the rain keeps coming. We were looking back at the, uh, at the gauges and since March first, we've had fifteen inches of rain since. Uh, I think since May, for, I think in the month of May, we had almost nine inches, correct?
Of rain.
And that's, you know, where, that's a lot of rain. Oh, okay. You have a, a, a lot. Um, so any flood problems that we may have had hidden for the last couple of decades were certainly. Uh, discovered. Uh, so I reached out to a, a variety of groups. As you'll remember, we had the, uh. The Silver Jackets Group, which is, um, Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, DDQ, a whole lot, plenty of, of federal and state letters. That come together and, and, um, had, did, they've done an initial flood assessment study. Visited a dozen different buildings. We've got a copy of the. interim report, more or less a PowerPoint. And, uh, this was done late twenty nineteen. Reached out to them over the last several weeks and finally got a response. Of course, COVID has slowed them down. They're working from home as most other, um, governmental agencies are. But, uh. We don't expect to get a report, a written report from them until probably end of, honestly, the end of June. Maybe earlier, but likely the end of June. Conversely, and that would be a starting point. So they would have recommendations for the next steps that we can get grant funding to do. I think the next step that they wanted to do was map the stormwater system into town. So we know where the water's coming from. They'd also looked at, um, the, uh, looking at, I can't remember the, the term, but basically. Uh, areas upstream that we can slow the flood waters down, acquiring property and having it as a, as a flood storage area that would slow the water down. Same time you figure out how to speed it up and get it out of town too. So they, we've, uh, reached out to Norfolk Southern. Norfolk Southern being, you know, with the trestle just behind. Really, I guess it's behind Wilco or past, just past Wilco under, behind Honeywell side. Haven't got any com- comments back or response back from Norfolk Southern, but we're pushing to try and get them to help with an engineering analysis of that, of that trestle. In addition to all that, there's a group called, you probably can familiar with the New River Conservancy. They have partnered with Friends of Pete Creek, Friends of, um, Clayter Lake to do a, what's called, what they're calling an environmental assessment, restoration plan for Pete Creek. Part of that includes flood mitigation and, and flood studies to, um. To, to figure out. They actually were the ones that had the idea of looking upstream, where can we go upstream? Is Magnox a good site even, uh, as, as some type of, of, uh, flood hazard or flood, um, uh, catchment, uh, area? They. The New River Conservancy would have, will have some recommendations for that low hanging fruit items, whether it's. You know, clearing out the creek bottoms and, and getting the water out quicker or if it's. Any type of, you know, specialized riprap that might be able to slow the water down before it gets here. So. That conversation is still going. They would like to come to council and make a, a presentation, have a discussion with council in July at the works. I think at the work session, we should look at. Having that certainly at the council meeting. But, um. They are going to be integral, in my opinion, in, in moving any type of flood mitigation efforts along just with their reach. And the Army Corps again with their money. Uh, the only thing with the Army Corps is they don't get in to a huge hurry unless Congress tells them to get into a huge hurry.
You're saying, I'm sorry, the New River Conservancy?
Yes, sir.
Would be here and. And with any recommendations at that point?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And hopefully we'll be dried out a little bit by then.
Make a comment today that, uh, our delegate Nick Rush finally got touch with us. Uh, we haven't been getting any response from him and Doug. He did a good job for Mr. Goodman in here. He could also stay on top of this thing. He had a comment. Uh, delegate Nick Rush contacted me today to have, uh, my, my concern was any doubt to stop responding. And, uh, oh, he's commented everything. He said, "To go ahead and, and shoot the letter and everything that Mr. Ud has already sent." To him while he's in Richmond with our big friend Ben Shay and Morgan Griffin. And you scratch my back and I'll scratch your back. We gotta take good as problem. As I still say, it may not be a hundred percent smoking, but I guarantee you it's a huge problem. It's that trust down there. We will have some drone pictures, hopefully, hopefully, uh, our good friend Ron Hall, he's, uh, got some pictures of the pipe just got plugged up. The water hasn't where to go when it comes down the stream. It's too fast and goes, we'll go through the one whole road across.
Certainly.
Which is an after day of life. So I don't know what he'll do if it doesn't mean anything, but we don't try to exit at all. And, and I would like for Mr. Goodman, uh, he, he's in contact, uh, Mr. Griffin and, uh, Mr. Shay as much as I am. And Mr. Rush to stay on top of this force and, uh, keep, keep heat up there. And let's see if we can save this sample eventually. Uh, we, we don't flood down the street. You know, we, we got, we talked about that some action. Cursey Bob, another hit. Lot here bottom. You know, I, I, I talked to those folks. I talked to those folks, but they, they're, they're pinned. They're pinned. They can't go anymore. If, if we have a fire or we, we, you're not even getting to them. And, and they're taxpayers. They're paying for these services. They ain't gonna get it. Falls back on us. I, I like a good friend here, Mr. Mr. Goodman, to, to keep the heat. Let's see what we can do with this thing and, uh, you shoot Mr. Ud.
Afforded, uh, what I, uh, it's a, it's a mystery, uh, to delegate rush.
Nick, Nick, um, uh, Doug Rush come in, had a meeting with us, almost like you, you know, several months back on. So he is very wired. That's what we gotta do, you know, that's, that's what we gotta do is keep up the pace.
Since, since the railroads are more heavily regulated by Congress than pretty much anybody else. I'll reach out to Morgan's office and, and see if we can get a conversation started at that level. Maybe, maybe delegate Rashnick can, um. Can coordinate with, with, um, with the office to see what they can do, but. As we all know, when it comes to the Army, Army Corps of Engineers, like you said, it's slow, so slow. The railroad is even slower. The railroad is even slower, um, so. But, uh, you know, the other thing I want to point out, uh, I went back down Bell Avenue as well. You know, I saw what happened in Lotir and Curzy and I was very concerned. But after what we saw on Bell Avenue, the, with the previous flood, I went down there and talked to the business owners. Got some very scared business owners. You, you know, you've got a lot of stuff going on there. One of the things I noticed as, as I kind of tried to figure out what was going on there is there is a, uh, a stormwater pipe right towards the end of Bell Avenue. And that pipe goes in straight into the creek. It's good for normal rain stormwater removal. However, the way it's designed, if, if you think about it, if the creek backs up, the water goes up that pipe and it actually starts backfilling before the creek, uh, goes over the bank. So we may need to, to rethink how that line is being done. You know, as a way to divert the water in the creek and, and make it so it doesn't necessarily pond up, uh, as quickly. I, I still think we, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a fluid engineer. I don't deal with fluid dynamics all that much in college. But, um, uh, my other thought was, is there a way that we can raise the bank there on Bell Avenue a little bit to maybe divert the water towards a, a less populated, yes, less utilized piece of land? And, and of course, on the converse, you also need to look on the other side over near the Pulaski baseball facility, um, as well to see if maybe those we can just kind of raise it up a little bit, maybe. New Orleans style if we have to, um, and, and kind of push that water over down.
Yeah, the problem, I guess, you know, think about fluid. What do you want to call it?
Fluid dynamics.
Fluid, yeah. Um, I think anything short of pumps, uh, it's just so flat through there. That's the, that's the biggest problem. But, um, yeah, I'm hoping that, um, a lot of the rec, good recommendations from the Army Corps will be something similar to whether it's a berm or, or what have you. To, to up slow that down.
And I think it's important. I do see, you know, we had discussed before having kind of a tiered approach. Um, these are obviously, it's certainly things that need to be done with the trestle and, and some of the things Mr. Goodman spoke of. Those are long-term items and I think we all recognize that. Uh, the New River Conservancy, it sounds like it's our more immediate, um, result oriented, uh, outfit. So I think we need to, uh, we need to, to attack this from all these, all these angles and, uh, and see if we can get some actionable items and, and, and start down this road. We recognize it's going to be a long ride, but anything we can do in the short term is going to help them, so.
The other thing I'd like to see us really talk about, because we haven't done this in the last ten years, is to really investigate what's going on with the water at, um, in Lotir Bottom and Curzy. You know, this is, every time it floods, those communities flood. We, you know, we've, we've replaced a lot of those houses. It's from the tornado project, the CDBG project and so forth. Some via other projects. But, you know, you can raise a house and it doesn't flood, but the car, the motorcycle, all that stuff that's sitting out front, it's still destroyed and those people are certainly paying for that with their, um, with their insurance bills. And not everyone can just get up and move. Sometimes it's your own family home, you don't want to leave. Um, I'm, I'd be curious what we might be able to do along Pete Creek there to see if we can control the flooding. We've already done a lot of great work. I mean, Mr. Pego and his department there put their heads together. But, you know, again, it looks like some berms, dikes, you know, those sorts of things, uh, along the waterway, would that help? You know, it may not stop a massive flood, but if it stops the smaller ones, um, you know, it might pay for itself and just not have a public works out there to, to fix everything.
I want to say one more thing, of course. Uh, Lotir Bottom, uh, Mr. Maxwell, actually, he's come out of the house and, uh, I would very agree with, uh, it, it is a long term and I know it's a big ticket item when I'm getting ready to say, but it's something that we need to work on, as you say, in, in the future. So is, it had rolled up a four coming off Summit Street off of, uh, Mount Olive up there in Summit Street, having some kind of a fire road or some kind of a road from Summit Street to Lotir Bottom. Uh, if you can't get it off, that's, that's, I'm sure okay. But at least you have access to those, what, ten or fifteen homes there? I don't know, how many, how many of them are people? You know, ten?
Probably ten.
Ten? Uh, they're all valued. So at least we have access, uh, down to there. And I know that that's something we probably not built for doing long run, but there's got to be grants, there's got to be Army Corps of Engineers. There's, there's got to be something to protect those people.
Even.
Uh, yeah, we, we gotta be able to get to them. But we can't right now, hadn't been for years and years neither. And the only alternative I know is, is raise the bridge, which is going to be very expensive and probably possible, or maybe cut a fire road just off that mountain. Uh, it's not really a mountain, it's not, if you look at it, it's not that far. For Summit, I think Mr. Penn's sister used to live in Summit. You can stand up and throw a rock. So a, a gravel road or a fire truck, you know, that may be something we can look at. On the other hand, uh, Mr. Bentley, uh, is a, a, a water break supervisor in his crew. They need to be committed for the job that they do prior to flooding the whole town shop. He, he physically goes and checks his manholes. You know, that's what they do all night long, prior force. They're doing everything they can do. They're, they're, they're in his force. That goes, and they need to be committed for a job well done. It's the up dust from here on, we need to try to figure out how to take care of Lotir Bottom.
Only thing I would say is, and I know this comments made, that maybe we can get some pictures for the ground of, of the railway, uh, uh, picture speak a lot, a thousand words if we're, if we're planning on sending stuff to delegates and congressmen that we could. I know we've got some good pictures of what the flood looks like. I mean, I've heard you send me a picture of, this is what we got and a picture of what's causing it. It makes it a little bit easier to understand than us saying, hey, we got a bridge somewhere that we, you know, helped with. They actually see that. They see the flood at the same time and that same communication. And it makes it a whole lot easier for them to actually think about, make care of it.
Hindsight being what it is, I wish we'd have been, been able to get over and get a picture of the trestle during the, the April flood, but, um,
that's all right, even if it's not flooding, we take a picture.
Oh, it's, you'll see the debris.
See the debris and, uh, and the pinch point. And, yeah, I think it might help get more attention than just the waters.
Sure.
What, what other thing to consider? I would talk to the college engineering over at Virginia Tech and look at some of the senior design projects that those guys have to do and, and when, um, before they graduate. That might be an opportunity for a senior design project where they can actually model the flow of the water based on the volume and so forth. You know, they can run into the supercomputer and, and get the models, show what it looks like. That would help a lot of folks kind of understand as they look at the creek and they go, oh, that's, that's kind of deep. We all know that it gets pretty high frequently. And then, you know, that sort of, if you look at the topography downstream from it, be able to clearly demonstrate what it is without the trees being in the way or anything else. You can kind of get a better visual for showing folks what we're dealing with. And of course, the other component that needs to be reminded to folks is, um, you know, we talked about the New River Conservancy, but we didn't mention the, the work they need to do regarding the doodle dust. Um, all the stuff that's on the banks from the acid plants and everything else. You know, we have to factor that in because we don't think about it all that much. But all that, all those chemicals, all that goes into Clayter Lake, that is the county's water source. It's Clayter Lake. So we literally, you know, the, the industrial pass of Pulaski is polluting Clayter Lake. And so the goal there, whatever we do, would be important to make sure that we preserve the water quality.
Can we add this item to the, uh, to the, uh, our, the?
Projects, I'm sure.
Projects, I'm sure. Uh, that way we can track all of the different arms and legs that this has. Uh, that will bring us on thirteen, the appropriate funds in.
Uh, Mr. Goodman asked for this to fit on the agenda?
So, you know, as, as you all know, we got that shock in, in January that the, the reserves had, uh, nearly halved. Um, and, you know, that affects our standpoint from audit. It potentially impacts our ability to get loans in the future, at least the interest rate that we play at loans. And, um, several people in the community reached out to me and said, well, how did you do that without a budget amendment or anything else? And you all were shocked. Um, I said, well, I, I thought that we had to, um, appropriate that money, if money to stay in the reserves, that that authority was solely within the, um, purview of the council. And of course, we found out it's not. So I asked Mr. Questonberry to reach out to the other communities and see, is that, is that the norm? Or, or there usually fiscal policies in place, right then? And it appears that there are, most of the neighboring localities, they either don't know what a reserve fund is, so we're already better off, um, or they have some very strict rules in place. So what I was hoping that we might be able to do is talk about what those rules should be and, and maybe, uh, when you all get back together in July, have a, have a, an ordinance that you can adopt. I should note, the principles of community, uh, not community, sorry, I'm a blur. Pr- the principles of sound financial management, um, that we had put into our, uh, budget for the last six years, do actually state that, you know, we should never be less than ten percent. Uh, we'll strive for fifteen. And then the other one is that we will pay it back within thirty-six months. So just a, a rough idea for you. Right now, we, we would need to be paying the reserves back in about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year for the next three years in order to put them back where they used to be. And, and generally, whenever we borrow from reserves, you know, what that says is, if we had paid for the fire truck out of reserves and not of a loan, then we would have had three years to pay reserves back. So, but my, my hope would be is that in the future, um, by putting this appropriate policy in place, which is apparently the norm in a lot of localities in Virginia, that we won't have any more surprises like that. And, uh, maybe we'll get our reserves built back up to where they need to be.
I guess I, in conversation with folks, I've heard two different sides. I've heard some say that we do have a policy in place that would require approval and then, uh, it sounds like that we don't have a policy in place that would require approval. So what, what is the, what is the actual?
We, we do have a policy. I mean, anything that, uh, is, exceeds the budget, I want to say it's in my, my contract has a twenty-five thousand, but that still even comes back to council for approval if it's unbudgeted. Uh, I think what happened wasn't as much expenditure related as it was revenue related, where, where we had the, the loss. Coming up with policies that would be more restrictive or have more, um, more access or more eyes on the, the ongoing revenues would be just as important, I think, too. Adding to, adding to Mr. Goodman's areas, which I think we've, we've been doing a lot for the last several months, so.
I definitely would, you know, be in agreement though with putting that specifically, you know, in as, you know, as a, a written way of doing business. That it would not just be expenditures, that it would include revenue losses. You know, if that wording is necessary in order for it to be understood, I would think that that would be generally understood as the same thing. But if it wasn't, it was needed and over for it to require, to clarify, you know, communication about them, then I think, then we should.
If you take a look at the code of Virginia, it actually does talk about it barely. And the way the code of Virginia reads, and of course, I'm not a lawyer back here, um, you know, they talk about how it's the responsibility of the council to designate the use for funds. Um, and that's the point of the budget process, is why you all had to adopt a budget today, was to follow that, that state of, uh, the Commonwealth Virginia Code. So, you know, when I look at this, it's undesignated funds. So in order to designate it, is the way I would look at it. If you were going to transfer funds from undesignated funds to designate it, it requires council authority. It could be a dollar, it could be a hundred dollar. But, you know, that's, that's our role as elected officials, is to make that designation. And then the other thing to consider that's mentioned in here, I didn't even think about. Uh, if you take a look over the city of Salem, that, um, and some other communities, they actually have three types. They have a reserve for economic uncertainty. Um, I think in State of Virginia, we call that the, uh, ready day fund. Um, they have an emergency reserve. And then they have working capital. And it is important to probably work out how that would work with, um, to, to, if, you know, for example, if, if we've got two hundred thousand dollars in bills, but only a hundred thousand dollars in the bank, can, can Ms. Reese go ahead and take a hundred thousand dollars from reserves, pay the bills and pay it back thirty days later when taxes are in? You know, I don't know if that's covered here exactly or not, but, you know, it's more just fiscal policy. That, that would be my advice is perhaps you might be in a situation where you say, we never spend more of our reserves than five percent of the budget. If five percent of the, if we have less than five percent, we can't spend it, period. Because you may run into a situation where taxes are related or anything else and you have bills to pay, but you technically have no money to pay them. It's just, you know, any of us that are involved in business, you know what that's like? Just, you know, payments coming in, payments going out, you never line up right.
So I think Mr. Goodman raises some good points. We had touched on those previously. We, 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 we do need to ensure that we have established guidelines on how funds are transferred from, from unassigned reserves to, to something else. I was very much under the impression when we had this discussion previously that, that the, uh, some of the line items, there was an over spending on certain line items. And I attributed that at the time to, we just hadn't reconciled our expenditures. Is that an accurate statement?
Some of it, some of it was over spending, um, you know, for a variety of, of reasons, whether it was, uh, employee payouts for retirements or, um, you know, thing goes back to with the, with the paving, for instance, we always overpaid because at the end of the year, when, if VDOT says, you know, this two, twenty thousand dollar expenditure doesn't really qualify, we want to make sure that we overspent twenty thousand, for instance. So we have that buffer. We don't have to pay VDOT that twenty thousand. You know, so that, that's, you know, we, I think we, twenty thousand is probably the maximum that we do now. That would want, that would more want to do, but, um,
The paving was significantly over twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think that one.
Hundred thousand almost?
That one had, we actually had a couple of parking lots that we paved, um, that were reimbursed this fiscal year. Yes, for, um, you know, for instance, the, 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 um, first street down there at the end.
And it didn't get VDOT reimbursed for parking lots?
But it's, that's, that comes out of the ineligible, not the eligible side. Uh, it still costs streets, causes it to pay. Uh, but we, uh, yeah, there's, and, and when you look at the, your inappropriate fund balance and what affects that, you really should look at both sides, them going out and coming in, you know. If, if you have those revenue projections that are falling short, you'd be able to check, to have a check on that early on. We now have it set up in the, in the, where we can look, you know, four years, some, some even longer, but at least four years on a monthly basis, where were we, uh, May thirtieth in two thousand seventeen versus where we are right now? So, you know, that I can at least compare, you know, and if things continue like they are, we finished twenty seventeen with three, four hundred thousand dollars going into reserves. So, you know, we, we have a better idea of how to, how to, uh, anticipate the budget fall, uh, falling on June thirty.
One other thing happened to us. During the time we approved using money from the reserves, but we didn't know how's money within the reserves.
That's going to be, you know, as we, as we move forward, I think any, any kind of, um, request will clarify that, you know, you know, council, we need to, I recommend spending ten thousand dollars that reserve balances, or whatever it is. Are really, you know, and that, what shows up in the audit is a point in time. You know, June thirty, we could have as much as, you know, two point one, two point two million, or we could have as little as one point one, one million, um, in reserves. And when you have a fifteen million dollar budget, you, you, you expect to spend about a million, at least a million a month. And that's, that's, that's a big swing. So, you know, it's, it's something we need to have a close, close eye on.
Do you, do we have a better, I'm sorry. Do, do, do we have a better idea of where we're starting to land now that it's been a few months since our audit?
Yep, um. Actually brought that. So, I mean, if you, if you look at, and this is post-COVID, this is dealing with COVID and everything in, uh, re-related. Mills tax, um, if we have a 60% yield month in the month of June, we've been, we've been about 85% of, of where we, where we were. Uh, we were about $80,000 to $90,000 a month in Mills tax. We're getting 70, 75, um, 78. Uh, if we were at 40% or 40,000, we're still going to meet our budget. So, I think, you know, Mills tax is going to exceed the revised budget that we revised tonight. Um, real estate taxes, we've already collected 1.3 million of 1.4 million. So, I, you know, we're still a couple of day, a couple of days left, and we'll have that as a conversation point here in a minute. Uh, so I think we're going to be, we're going to be set on that. Sales tax, um, as I said, that lags behind a little bit. In, um, in February, our sales tax collection was just over $60,000. That fell to 45,000 in, um, April, uh, March and April. Um, and then come back up 57,000 in May. I'm expecting if that, if we get another $40,000 a month, we're still well at excess of sales tax revenue projections. Uh, and in the B poll, we've already received nearly half million of a budget of, um, 440,000, so we weigh above on that. Now, what happens next fiscal year, I think that's what we've, we really just don't know until we get more months of this COVID-related data to, to compare to. Right now, knock on wood, we were far enough ahead on projections on revenues and the cutting, the cost cutting, the, the, the hiring freeze, the, uh, the, uh, spending freeze. A lot of that's addressed or taken care of, of any issues, in my opinion.
Do you foresee being able to return, uh, monies to reserve?
Hey, I just don't, I just don't have a good grasp yet. I should have, I can have a gr- a grasp and put, put it in the week, I think we're going to put money back in, I just don't know how much.
Cause I, I, I agree with Mr. Goodman, that's probably one of the most important things we do. When we first came into, some of us came to council, um, our reserves were extremely low. And, um, uncomfortably low. And we managed to get that to, I think, what, we were pushing?
Pushing 2 million, well, at 1.8.
Eight.
Which is about 15, 10%, 12%?
At, at our highest was eight, um, 17%.
17%.
It was a low budget here, too.
Right, so, and, and now we've fallen off that, and I think the recommendation from it is 15 to 20%. Um, I would like to see it's a 20%. So, we really need to make that a priority. And so if we do come in, which, uh, I certainly hope we do, and it sounds like we may, come in ahead and have more revenue than we've anticipated in this revised budget, I think that, that would agree. Mr. Goodman, those monies need to, need to, uh, at least a, a large portion of those monies need to go back to, uh, unfunded reserves. Uh, so we can continue to build that and, and achieve that 15, 20%.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, in reality, you know, the Gatsby standard wants 15. But when most of us first started, it was 10, uh, or lower. I mean, some of, I'm sure it was probably 5% back when you started, Mr. Penn. Um, and the, and the reason for that is you have governments that are going bankrupt, and they're making poor fiscal decisions. Um, you know, we've been accused of that, especially since January. Um, and so it's our responsibility to step up and, and make that, and I suspect that 20% is going to be within the next few years. Um, but you also have some big things to think about. You've got, um, you know, as the person mentioned here, saving money for fire apparatus, instead of hoping that the, the county will be able to, to fund those, or when, you know, special chances like getting a ladder truck come up, you've got the money set aside for it. Um, in reality, it's, it's a lot of how we all manage our finances at home. We know when we're going to need to buy a new car, we start saving. We make sure that we've got enough money in the account for the payment and everything else. Um, government budgeting is, to put it bluntly, weirder. But there's still a mentality that we can take, yes, the, the audit is a snapshot in time, but the question you have to ask yourself is, why is that snapshot so off? You know, it's one thing if the snapshot says it's 14, and we say it's supposed to be 15, and then come July or August, it's right where it needs to be. But when you have a, a shift as much as, as, as it was, that tells you that there's a fundamental flaw in how we're doing things. Um, and I think that's part of what this policy would, would encourage.
I think the most important thing that we do is make sure, as we all recognized at some point in time in the last two months, that nobody was completely happy with the budget that we just approved. And we did that basically in a conversation of that we weren't going to stop talking about it until we were happy with it. And so the most important thing we do is make sure the conversations are about our policies in regards to communication and approval of unspending or revenue losses are, are just as tied to that same conversation that we basically said, we're going to continue to talk about this at every single meeting until it's resolved. You know, that, that we have a council that actually says that we're happy with, with where we stand in our financial, you know, position and what we're trying to do. Nobody has said that yet. And so it needs to be on every agenda and, and continue to be updated with our current stance from, from COVID, or in, you know, our current stance with any changes and conversations that we feel like we need to talk about until we are resolved and staring at a, a plan that everybody's comfortable with. I mean, I think that's the most important thing that we, is, is it, it should be aligned on every single agenda moving forward until, until we find ourselves at that level.
So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we instruct staff to come back with a, with a draft policy for the July meeting for council's review that, um, uh, requires authorization from the council for any expenditures or funds that are, uh, unappropriated. Um, and also looks at the options of, uh, ready day funds, emergency reserves, and, uh, working capital options as, uh, as kind of laid out by the, the town of Benton, as well as looking at some of the other communities for, for best options.
Second. A motion on the floor now, second, if you would call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Uh.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
We will now move to item 13C, Resolution 2020, that's contained to Resolution endorsing reconstruction of West Hummer Street Bridge.
Um, this is another VDOT grant we received award of maybe a year ago, 15 months ago, but it was one of those multi-year projects. So, we had award, we were awarded engineering funds to come out of FY21. Uh, construction will start FY22, and we'll finish up FY23 funding. Now, the construction itself may finish up quicker, but, um, that's where the grant funds are, are coming from. So, the next step, we've gone through the engineering process, or the RFP process for engineer. Um, and I can never remember the names of that company, I put it, Schwartz and Associates were the, uh, the firm, and they're actually very familiar with, uh, the bridges they do, our, our bridges stations.
Correct.
Uh, so they're, they're familiar with the, the needs of that bridge for quite some time. Um, it's in front of VDOT now for their review. What we need is this, is the enclosed resolution from council, basically verifying, yes, we still want to do this bridge. We still, we're ready to, to start the engineering process. Um, the lion's share of this, this project is being paid for with, um, grant money. When I say lion's share, I want to say 95, 96%. We're only, we only have to come up with, um, just over $42,000 over the stretch of the project, and it's spread out. It's a percentage of each, each of the billions, so it's, it's not a huge amount of money to get a new bridge. But I do recommend, um, adoption of the, uh, the resolution as, as provided, so we can get that to VDOT tomorrow.
That's, that's a steal for us to do, you know, 4%, 5%. Remind me again, which bridge on Commerce is this?
It's the, uh, going past Bertha, uh, going Commerce Street past Bertha before you get to, um, Lotier and, um, Cre- Percy Bottom. There's a new one right there, so before that, uh, the, the historic. The one that we had the water problem, and we had to lower the, the weight of the metal.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2020 dash 17, Resolution endorsing the reconstruction of Westing, West Hummer Street Bridge, structure, uh, number 8,008 project as written.
Second. Motion, seconds all over the place, if you would call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
All right, that moves us to item 13D, Ordinance 2020 dash 04, Proposed Property Tax Penalty Waiver.
Uh, I'm taking the county's lead on this. Uh, this is an ordinance that the, the county adopted for, relative to their, um, their real estate tax collections, basically saying if you, uh, through this COVID, uh, pandemic, if you can't afford to pay your real estate taxes, they are extending the penalty to September, um.
You delay.
Delay, I'm sorry, you delay. There, you still, you, there, taxes are still due, but they're not charging the penalty until, uh, Sept-, I want to say September 1st. The 5th, okay, so three months, uh, 90 days.
Good one, but.
Right, yeah.
He didn't have some money.
You're right, right checked. Um, this, sorry, I did not expect that one. As I said before, we're, we're really close on collections. I think we bill out one and a, 1.5, a little over one and a half million dollars worth of taxes. We've collected 1.3 and change already. We only need another hundred and change to meet the budget. Um, but still, I think it's a good faith effort if, if council were to consider this as, as written. And, and again, following the county's lead, I think it's a, a good, uh, ordinance to do.
Is, is it like one of those, uh, I'm trying to make sure this isn't one of those crazy credit offers where, you know, if you, if you wait the full period and you get hit anyways, is it, is it basically if you don't pay by September 5th, that's when the late fees and interest start?
Correct.
Okay.
We do not go back to 90 days and start collecting the 90 days. That, that 90 day, you're basically saying, I won't. And honestly, truly, we, and the, the, the finance staff have the ability in some level to, to help defer that anyway, but we're saying, everybody that hasn't paid, let's just do a, a blanket statement, uh, for that. You know, a couple hundred, um, property owners is, is affected, but still, that's, it's a couple hundred that could benefit for a couple months.
Seems more than fair to me. Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance 2020 dash 04, Ordinance to County Council Lieutenant Velasquez, Virginia, Providing Relief to Town Taxpayers by Reducing to Zero the Interest and Penalties Assessed on First Half 2020 Taxes Paid Between June 5th, 2020, September 5th, 2020, and enacted pursuant to Section 58, um, dot 1 dash 3916 of Code of Virginia 1950 as amended and as proposed.
Second. A motion in a second, if you would call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
All right, uh, now, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for one item under Virginia Code, 2.23711A1, Concerning Discussion, Consideration or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment Appointment, Promotion Performance, Demotion Salaries, Disponing or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Employees, or Employees Any Company, Evaluation of Performance of Departments or Schools of Public Institutions of Higher Education. Where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals regarding town managers' evaluation.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second, if you would call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.